Calling the April 18 Petaluma City Schools Board of Education meeting to order at 4:32. We're acknowledging AB 361. Are there any comments from the public on closed session items? Is there anyone there? We are going to adjourn to closed session. Oh, everyone got quiet. All right. Reconvening at 6:04. Sorry, we're a little bit late. Thank you all for joining us. We will continue on with hello Superintendent Harris with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if anyone could stand. All right. Moving on to special recognitions, reports, and presentations. First up is the announcement of our Career Technical Education Coordinator.
Thank you. Dear Board President Pond, Board Members, Superintendent Harris, Fellow Cabinet Staff, Students, and Parent Community, I'm happy to introduce to you our new College and Career CTE Coordinator, Dr. Dan Osterman. Dr. Osterman has over 20 years of educational experience with Humble Beginnings as a music teacher, where he taught for several years in music to elementary students across Los Angeles Unified School District and throughout LA County with such organizations as Beyond the Bell, Music LA, and the Henry Mancini Institute. In 2015, he received his doctorate in education from the University of Southern California. And for the past 16 years, Dr. Osterman has mainly worked in the secondary settings. He is currently finishing his fourth year as principal of Casa Grande High School. And prior to that, he had served three years as assistant principal of Casa Grande High School. His long tenure as an administrator with Petaluma City Schools has been an important factor in many of the successes we have seen at Casa Grande High School, especially around college and career and career technical education. During his tenure, he has developed important post-secondary and industry partnerships to advance and expand the CTE program. From securing donations and grants supporting CTE initiatives totaling over $290,000 to successfully securing work-based learning and internship opportunities for his students, Dr. Osterman's passion and dedication has no doubt supported many of our students with opportunities they might not otherwise have had. When the opportunity to provide greater support for our college and career, as well as our career technical education programs became available, it was evident that Dr. Osterman was a natural fit to help PCS continue to expand in these areas with greater efficiency. I'm happy to welcome Dr. Osterman in his new role, helping the entire K-12 district, and looking forward to celebrating his success as our new College and Career CTE Coordinator. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Osterman to the stand.
Thank you for your support. Thank you. It is an honor to be here this evening to accept your endorsement of my new position, and it is an honor to continue serving Petaluma City Schools. To grow and support our programs, to maximize the opportunities for all students in as many college and career pathways as we can sustainably support is truly awesome. And again, I thank you for your support and your faith in me to bring this work forward. In the coming months, I very much look forward to partnering with staff across the district and the Ed Services Department in particular to craft a set of goals and action plans aimed at leveraging the great opportunity we have. I also look forward to listening deeply to our community, to our parents, our students, or staff, to foster deep understanding and commitment to our collective vision of college and career readiness and success. A number of exciting opportunities lie ahead around dual enrollment, the Stonemac State University Promise, CTE pathways and programs, and a set of industry partners who are truly hungry to partner and provide a level of work-based learning that will have profound impact for our students and community. Again, thank you for your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ho. Thank you, Tony. Next up, we have site reports from Grant, as well as Student of the Month from Petaluma Junior, Kenilworth, Petaluma High, and Casa. So I think we're beginning with the site report from our grant students who are here.
Good evening. I am Saranya Sreshkumar, the interim principal at Grant School. Thank you all for being here today. We are joined by a lot of scholars representing each grade level. I also have a lot of my teachers here as well. So I'm going to quickly just ground us in our vision, and then I'm going to let the students speak for themselves. Here are Grant shamrocks. They'll introduce themselves as they come up by grade level. Here is our new vision for Grant School. This is work that we've done throughout this school year with my staff and leadership team meetings and staff meetings, and was presented to the Grant PTA and our school site council to get all stakeholders' opinions. So our vision for Grant Elementary is that we will provide each and every student with access to an academically rich environment that encourages curiosity and inquiry. Students are able to explore and grow academically, socially, and emotionally while building a strong sense of belonging and community with the help of our experienced staff and strong parent support. Values such as collaboration, compassion, growth mindset, and inclusivity are integrated into our everyday experiences at Grant School. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and invite my students to come up by grade band. Some of them will be joined by their teachers to kind of share our vision in action already. Start with TK and Kinder.
Hello, I'm Dana Mellon, and I teach kindergarten at Grant. Nice to see you all. This is my wonderful student, Finley.
My name's Finley Hightower, and I'm in kindergarten. I love school. I like doing art, and I like all the activities. This is my piece of art.
I'm Amanda Beavers, and I teach first grade at Grant, and I have Harvey, Dylan, and Stella.
In February, all three classes went to the La-Zyra Ranch to help the local watershed by planting native plants along Stempel Creek.
Now each class is learning about a different watershed and their unique habitats. We will then teach each other's class about the watershed we studied.
My name is Stella. I'm here to talk about first grade. Ms. Wilson's class is studying the Petaluma's watershed, which is where we live. Ms. Beaver's class is the class that I'm in, is studying the Amazon River watershed. Ms. McAvoy's class is studying the Yangtze River watershed.
Hi, everyone. I'm Pamela Crafty, and I teach second grade. And these are two amazing students from my class, David and Sydney.
Second grade cares about environment and community. Earlier in the year, we mapped around the area to observe different bugs on campus. We found out there are different bugs depending on where the observation was made.
We have learned about our watershed and helped restore a habitat on a straw field trip. Straw means students and teachers restoring a watershed on the field trip to La-Zyra Ranch. We learned the different steps to plant trees and plants. We learned about the life cycle of mosquitoes also this year.
Currently, we're learning about steelhead. We are hatching steelhead in our classroom. We set up the aquarium so the steelhead would have their needs met like they would in a river. We have learned about their habitat needs and the beginning of their life cycle.
We have learned about the importance of our environment and the life cycle of animals in second grade at Grant Elementary School.
I'm Michelle Anderson, third grade.
Hi, I'm Kim Bowman, third grade.
And these are our students.
Hello, my name is Finley, and I'm in Ms. Bowman's class at Grant School.
Good evening. I'm in Ms. Anderson's class this year, and my name is Reese.
This year, we are so fortunate to have exciting field trips.
Yes, we went to Helen Putnam Park to study science, and we had a really fun time at Ag Day learning some local history.
Coming up, we have a trip to Schoenberger Park, where we will birdwatch and dissect owl pellets, as well as a trip to the Fairfield Osborn Reserve, where we will learn about Native American tribes, habitats, and animal adaptation.
We have also had incredible guest speakers this year. Kevin McDonald, our mayor, came to talk to us about local government. The firefighters came to teach us about fire safety, and they showed us their cool equipment.
The Seminole County Water Agency came to our classes. They taught us how our water is cleaned and how we can conserve water. Recently, we had a wonderful lesson about pollination from the people at Strong.
Another fun thing we do in third grade is rotation day. Ms. Bowman teaches us science on Thursdays, and Ms. Anderson teaches us social studies. It is fun to learn from both teachers.
One of my favorite things about this year is buddy time. This year, we are actually big buddies.
We get to help our TK and Kinder buddies learn how to read and do math.
We want to thank our awesome PTA for providing us with assemblies, PE, and garden clubs.
Yes, and we really appreciate the PTA for raising money for kids through the gala and jogathon. We love third grade, and we love Grant School. Thank you for inviting us to the board meeting.
Hi, my name is Bianca.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Reyes. I teach at Grant in fourth grade, and these are two of our representatives of our fourth grade community.
Hi, I'm Bianca.
And I'm Sean.
As you can see, we are very busy in fourth grade.
Starting at the brown frame, you can see that our fourth grade is a happy community.
The lime green frame shows us a taste of leafy greens we have grown in the Grant garden.
On the dark green frame, which is the outdoor environmental learning on our field trip to Meere Woods.
The yellow frame showcases us attempting a challenge about structural engineering for an earthquake.
The blue frame circles our trip to Conley Ranch. It's a local outdoor garden and oak woodland ecosystem.
Now the purple frame shows an outdoor learning with our kindergarten.
The bottom right is showing us with the red frame showcasing our egg racer challenge for twig science.
And the final orange frame surrounds our Native American group project we're researching, writing, and creating together.
We love fourth grade.
We love fourth grade. Thank you.
And I will introduce our lovely fifth grade students. We have Valerie and Maya here.
Hi, I'm Maya. I'm in Ms. Cota's fifth grade class.
Hi, I'm Valerie, and I'm in Ms. O'Neill's fifth grade class. Fifth grade has lots of projects. On the dark green square, me and some of my classmates are doing a puzzle to try and figure out the life cycle of a plant.
In the picture on the right, my classmates are doing Scientist of the Week. Scientist of the Week is where each student gets to present a science experiment in front of the class and explain how it works. In the picture, my classmates are demonstrating density with eggs and saltwater.
On the bottom picture is a field trip that both of our classes took, and we walked around Petaluma and took pictures of historic sites. After that, we chose three different sites and wrote an essay about them.
We are also getting ready for West Side Relays. So far, we have practiced high jump, discus, and shot put. We are excited for all these events and have even come up with team cheers. Also, today, we got back from an overnight camping trip to Alima Campground. We went on many fun hikes and learned about native plants and animals in our area. Thank you for your time.
And last but not least, our sixth grade students here. We're going to miss you guys next year. We have Max, Marielle, and Cassidy.
Hi, I'm Cassidy. This is Marielle and Max. We came here to talk about sixth grade camp. We went to Westminster Woods the week before spring break. Here is a photo of everyone who went.
Hello, my name is Marielle Goldfield. At Westminster Woods, we were given a bunch of opportunities and new things to try, but no one pushed us to do anything, instead, we were encouraged to push ourselves. They had what they called "challenge by choice," which is what it sounds like. You have a challenge, and you can choose to do it or not. What they described it as, as a comfort zone, a space outside your comfort zone, and your panic zone. You were encouraged to try things outside your comfort zone, but not in your panic zone, and know your limits. Some people had small limits, and that was okay. They knew where to stop. Some people had big limits, and that was also okay, because they were encouraged to try new things. Some things that I didn't want to do included things like a cargo net going on obstacle courses, but I reminded myself that that wasn't in my panic zone. It was just outside of my comfort zone. And they really just care about that everyone has a good time and strengthening us as a community.
We are put into a cabin with people we are friends with or just people we got along with well. Then we got paired with the cabin of the opposite gender, who most got along well with. In these groups, we went on little adventures with our naturalist, learning about many things and seeing even more, like example, some watersheds.
Thank you.
Alrighty, if all my teachers and students wouldn't mind joining me here, we're going to get a photo. All Grant teachers, come on up.
Back here?
Yes, okay.
All right. All right, so we are moving on to Students of the Month. Petaluma Junior, Kenilworth, Petaluma High, and Casa. So I believe we're starting with Petaluma, oh, with Kenilworth. Do we have our readers for Kenilworth? Okay.
Kenilworth Junior High is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Gavin Schlins. Gavin has been chosen Student of the Month because he is an outstanding student, exemplary citizen, and all-around great guy. Gavin is truly Kenilworth's Renaissance man. Gavin is a 4.0 student, a talented musician, and a competitive rock climber. Gavin's history teacher, Mr. Raya, enthusiastically shared, "I'm so happy Gavin was chosen for Student of the Month." Gavin is smart, friendly, and empathetic. He asks great questions and is fully evolved in the curriculum. He's a team player and works very hard to maintain good grades. Gavin is great. While Gavin excels in all of his classes, he is also an important member of the Kenilworth Band. Gavin has been playing the flute and piccolo for five years and is planning on participating in Casa Grande's band program. When Gavin is not at school, he can be found rock climbing. Gavin is a member of the Vertex Competitive Rock Climbing Team. Gavin especially enjoys bouldering. Bouldering is climbing to a maximum height of approximately 16 feet without the use of ropes or harness. In his free time, Gavin enjoys reading and recommends the Wings of Fire series. After high school, Gavin would like to attend UC Davis and pursue a degree in veterinary medicine. It was a pleasure to have Gavin as a student at Kenilworth. Congratulations, Gavin.
Kenilworth Junior High School is proud to introduce the April Student of the Month, Allison Buat. Alice has been chosen Student of the Month because she is an outstanding student, talented musician, and athlete. Ally has maintained a 4.0 grade point average while challenging herself in a rigorous academic program. Mr. Quintua, Ally's history teacher for two years at Kenilworth, shared, "Ally has been a pleasure to teach these last two years. Not only does Ally produce amazing work, but she can always be counted on to volunteer thoughtful responses to lecture questions and class discussions. Ally works very hard and is well-liked by her peers. Ally is definitely deserving of this award." While Ally is an outstanding student, she is also a talented member of the Kenilworth Band and has played flute for five years. When Ally is not in class, she is also a dedicated athlete and was a valuable contributor to the Colts championship basketball team. Ally is also a skilled tennis player and looks forward to be on the Casa Grande tennis team. In Ally's free time, she enjoys painting with watercolors. After high school, Ally would like to become a physician or a nurse and practice medicine in the neonatal intensive care unit. Ally has been outstanding Colt, and we are confident that she will continue to shine in high school and beyond. Congratulations, Ally.
Kenilworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, June Duncan. June has been chosen Student of the Month by her teachers because she is one of our most outstanding students academically and one of our most exemplary role models. June has excelled in a rigorous course of study while at Kenilworth. June's teachers describe her as positive, hardworking, and self-motivated. Not only is June impressive academically, but she is also a talented multi-instrumentalist for the Kenilworth Band. Mr. Klemmanock, June's band teacher, enthusiastically shared, "Quite simply put, June Duncan is one of the best band students I have ever had in my 25 years of teaching. June was one of my best flute players last year, and as an eighth grader, she decided she wanted to play the electric bass. She's only been at it not even a year and is already one of the top musicians in the band. To say that I rely on her and her abilities is putting it mildly, and the entire group has benefited these last two years from her talents. This spring, you will be able to see June marching in the butter and eggs parade with her electric bass and a portable amplifier on her back. After high school, June would like to attend Harvard or Yale and pursue a law degree. June would also like to practice law as a prosecutioner. We at Kenilworth are confident June has a bright future ahead of her."
And before we move on, I forgot, would everyone's family and friends stand up? Our Kenilworth Students of the Months, just so we can recognize you as well. Thank you. All right, Petaluma Junior.
Hi, I'm Monica, and I'm going to be reading it both in Spanish and in English. Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Sofia Villo Sanchez. Sofia was selected this month for her affectionate enthusiasm. Ms. Garby, Sofia's math teacher, shares that somehow Sofia manages to get even Ms. Garby's most reluctant learners to participate enthusiastically in her math group. Sofia enjoys her time at PJHS. She participates in concert bands where she plays the flute. When asked what she appreciates about school, Sofia shares that she appreciates the amount of time and thought that students and teachers at PJHS put into band activities. After PJHS, Sofia plans to attend Petaluma High School. There, she's looking forward to the range of classes she'll have the opportunity to take. We expect that Sofia's enthusiasm and love for learning will expand beyond high school. She's not sure yet of where the future will take her, but Sofia's goal after high school is to continue to learn new things and to try a range of careers. Petaluma Junior High está feliz de presentar a nuestro estudiante del mes de abril, Sofia Villo Sanchez. Sofia fue seleccionada este mes por su contagioso estudiasmo. La maestra de matemáticas de Sofia, Ms. Garby, comparte de que de que alguna manera Sofia logra incluir los alumnos más tímidos de su grupo de matemáticas. Sofia disfruta su tiempo en PJHS, participa en la banda de concierto donde toca la fluta. Cuando se le pregunta qué aprecia más de la escuela, Sofia comparte qué aprecia qué aprecia la cantidad de tiempo y pensamiento de los estudiantes y maestros de PJHS que dedican a las actividades planificadas. Después de PJHS, Sofia planea asistir a Petaluma High School. Ahí espera con ansias la variedad de clases que tendrá la oportunidad de tomar. Esperamos que el entusiasmo y el amor por su aprendizaje de Sofia se extenda más allá de la escuela secundaria. Todavía no está segura de a dónde le lleva el futuro, pero el objetivo de Sofia después de la escuela secundaria es seguir aprendiendo cosas nuevas y probar una variedad de carreras. Congratulations, Sofia.
Hi, my name is Narlyn Rodriguez, and Petaluma Junior High is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Oliver Pearson. Oliver was chosen by his teachers as soon of the month for being constantly responsible, academically thoughtful, and helpful to other students. Oliver has a number of highlights from the time of PJHS. Like many other junior high Like many other junior high students, Oliver loves to hang out with his friends and meet new people. At lunch, Oliver is routinely seen playing basketball with his fellow teammates from our eighth-grade basketball team. His favorite class is science because he gets to participate in exciting laps. Outside of school, Oliver keeps busy. He has baseball practice four days a week, and he likes to go to the gym in his free time. Every Monday, he also volunteers at an organization called Seres that helps feed people who are chronically ill. After PJHS, after PJHS, Oliver is looking forward to attending Petaluma High School, where he hopes to play both basketball and baseball. He's looking forward to reconnecting with friends from other schools, as well as taking exciting electives, such as the Wildlife Museum Management Class. While college is still far away, when thinking about his future, Oliver shares that he's interested in studying marine biology because the ocean is vast and there are always new things to discover. Congratulations, Oliver.
And can we have Oliver's family, please, stand up?
All right, next up, Casa.
Hi, my name is Emily, Casa Grande's ASB President. Our first Student of the Month is Heather Burgraff. Heather was born in July of 2005 and has lived in Petaluma her whole life. She comes from a loving family who worked hard for the jobs and lives they lead, always teaching her about the importance of putting care and dedication into everything she does and encouraging her to dream big. Therefore, Heather has worked exceptionally hard, staying an academically focused, straight-A student, while also exploring many of her other hobbies and interests. Heather has played competitive soccer in Petaluma ever since she was seven and has learned many things from her amazing teammates and coaches. She also has played volleyball for six years and enjoys both sports immensely and plans to continue them in the future. In her free time, she plays the piano and is a dedicated art student who loves painting and drawing. Since she has a passion for mathematics and science, Heather intends to study a STEM major at a four-year university in her future educational career and obtain a rewarding job. Heather is very grateful and excited to receive this award of Student of the Month and has her parents to thank for everything and her older sister to thank for being a continuous inspiration and best friend. She will continue to show great diligence in all she does and in her future in order to make her family, friends, and community proud. Congratulations.
Can Heather's and can we have Heather's family and friends stand as well?
Our next Student of the Month is Max McCullough. Max has excelled during his time in Petaluma City Schools and is honored with being chosen as Student of the Month. Inside school, Max has continuously challenged himself with his course selection, along with taking college-over classes as a dual-enrolled student at the SRJC. He ran as a long-distance athlete on the Casa Grande Track Team, running both the 800-meter and 600-meter races. Outside of school, Max has continued to be actively involved with his community. He has volunteered with Miracle League Baseball, where he worked one-on-one with players with special needs, and with the Petaluma People's Services Meal on Wheels, where he prepared and delivered meals for homebound senior citizens. For two years, he acted as a voting member of the Petaluma Youth Commission, where he advocated for the well-being of Petaluma's youth. Outside of school, Max works part-time at In-N-Out Burger and enjoys hanging out with his friends and playing intellectual games like chess and poker. Max will attend San Diego State University this fall, where he will study mechanical engineering. Max hopes to continue with his fascination for problem-solving while contributing to his community as a whole. Congratulations.
And can we have Max's family and friends, please, stand?
Hi, I'm Gianna Scott Calosi. I'm a current junior at Petaluma High School, and I will be ASB President next year. And I am here to announce Stephanie as our wonderful Student of the Month. So Stephanie is finishing up her fourth year at Petaluma High School and has been deeply involved in our community, both in and out of high school. During school, Stephanie founded Petaluma High's Library Club during her junior year and has served as club president ever since. In her club, the members share their common love for reading and doing monthly themed crafts. Other clubs Stephanie has participated in are the Photography Club, Interact Club, and JSA, which is Junior State of America. She is also a member of Link Crew, where she mentors freshmen to set them up for success in high school. She has enjoyed seeing the ever-growing personalities of the freshmen and is proud to say that she still maintains relations with the freshmen she was assigned during the 2021-2022 school year. She uses her bilingual skills to use by being assigned a freshman in her Link Crew group that speaks only Spanish and by giving tours to incoming transfer students who face language barriers coming from a Spanish-speaking location. While all of these are important, one of Stephanie's most meaningful extracurriculars is being a part of the Junior Commission on the Status of Woman in Sonoma County, where she has spent the 2022-2023 school year in advocating for the human trafficking of women. In the classroom, Stephanie has taken 13 AP/Honors classes while maintaining a 4.26 GPA, and her favorite class has been AP Psychology. Outside of instructional learning time, Stephanie has furthered her interest in the way that the brain works by taking summer classes through Harvard's Extension School. These classes have motivated her interest in the fields of neuroscience and criminology. In the near future, Stephanie is attending a four-year college, planning to major in neurology and minor in sociology. She hopes to use her knowledge to help other people in any way that she can. Congrats, Stephanie.
All right, can we have Stephanie's friends and family, please, stand? And our second Student of the Month from Petaluma High, we will recognize next month. She's at the Press Democrat Community Service Youth Award, so, all right. Thank you all.
So before all of the Students of the Month leave, let's get a group picture up here with the board. Amy Fadaji doesn't kill me.
All right, we will take a quick three-minute break so our Students of the Month can leave if they would like. Thank you. All right, moving on to ELOP. ELOP, I don't know how we're going to say this acronym, Summer Program Plan. A second, that's a secret surprise. We're telling you he didn't see her.
Do you have our
It is cool.
amazing presentation? Oh, that's okay. I can just chat it up. Can you? Summer 2023? I can try to reshare. Steve, I think I just emailed you also. Might be a PDF, though. Is that all right? We're going to make it be all right and make it work. All right. Did you turn the, you turned the heat up? Thanks, Chris. Okay. Here it comes. There it is. Hi, everybody. My name's JJ Lynch. I am your Expanded Learning Coordinator. And I'm so happy to present the plan and the process for this next ELOP Summer Program. As you know, ELOP has been quite a topic. Districts across the state must provide 30 non-school days of programming, offering a nine-hour option for any student that wants to attend that long. Among other requirements, programs must provide academic enrichment, physical activities. There's a lot of other parameters. I believe I've gone over them in presentations, and I really don't want to do it again. So right now, I just want to share our recommendations and our process. You can go to the next slide, please. So here's our challenge. A number of these challenges that you see on the presentation not only impact PCS, but also just school districts nationwide as we slowly come out of the pandemic. Our first obvious challenge is to just design a compliant program with ELOP. That's what we're mandated to do. But is it possible to address many of these district-wide and nationwide challenges within the framework of the summer program? How we do this, how do we avoid sending our kids and our teachers back to school in August burnt out from the summer learning program, but still have learning in summer? Right? So there's this kind of crazy catch-22. Research shows that summer programs can not only address the issues that you see here, but can actually tap into different learning styles by providing programs that look, sound, and feel different from that of a traditional school-year classroom. So not only can we address this, but we can actually learn in a different way. Next slide, please. And here's the timeline of the work that we've all been putting in. I really don't want to read all these. I mean, I can if you want, but I would prefer not to. I'd like to focus on some of the design decisions that we made for the summer program. We started, we looked at past data from our summer school model from last summer and from our experiences from teachers who have been doing this for a very long time in our district. We looked at successes, challenges. We also had to project what new challenges might come this summer that we don't even know about because last summer isn't the same as this summer. But we're also not fully out of the pandemic. So 2019 summer also isn't the same as this coming summer. We are in this kind of strange, weird, really potentially fruitful area where we can also, with these ELOP funds, try to reimagine what we want summer to look like, given the challenges from the previous slide. We did an RFP process for expanded learning providers. So this was designed. We got some pretty good proposals. I think they were all really high-quality proposals. And I believe it's a process that we'll be continuing to use. Chris really loved the RFP process and was instrumental on it. I learned a lot from that process. And then laying the foundation for a summer program, a lot of people don't realize that I think almost every single department in our district is involved in the summer program. So we're meeting with facilities, we're meeting with food services, we're meeting with transportation, with custodial, with maintenance, not only just ed services and student services to do the programming piece. It is truly opening a new school within our district. And then hopefully after tonight, we'll continue to build the program. If our recommendation is approved, we'll continue enrolling students, collaborating with the program partner. And next slide, please. Here's our plan. We're going to bring the joy. So we're going to partner with a program partner to provide the nine-hour day. This nine hours for these kids is going to feel like a summer camp. The learning will be embedded, the academics will be embedded, but it's going to feel, we're tricking the kids, basically, right? The learning will be embedded, but it's going to have a camp-like feel. And for the challenge of learning loss, we're going to utilize highly qualified credential teachers to provide focused, small-group interventions in literacy and then also in math. We'll continue to use the SIPs and Rewards curriculum for literacy, and we are adopting a math program called Math for Love. Yeah. So, and it's actually real math, but we're going to have some math lovers at the end of this program. This model not only provides a more impactful academic experience for the kids, but will also be an impactful experience for our teachers, allowing them to learn new techniques and hone their skills in this separate, different environment with a small group. And heaven forbid, those kids should all be at the same reading level in that small group, where they can actually make an impact on reading and math. And then we're going to provide meals and transportation as dictated in the ELOP. This removes barriers, not only is it a parameter, but it removes barriers to enrollment. And we're utilizing a summer backpack program. We're going to get books into the hands of kids, books that they just want to read and school supplies, because this program, again, is for all of our unduplicated students. All right, now I'd like to introduce Ashley Gillum from Champions to share the program summer model.
Hi, thank you. And so like JJ said, I'm the fun. She's going to take care of the academic piece. And so Champions joined the PCS community in 2020, providing distance learning. As JJ said, we've learned a lot since then. We came in and provided distance learning support, but really, we could do that because of our background and what Champions has come to learn all the years before that. We are a branch of Kinder Care Learning, and so we have that child development background and have been able to grow on that and move into the after-school space. The great thing about our programs is we are on the after, we are on the school campuses, and so we provide that convenience for families. Next slide. So who we are. In your community, we are at two schools, both Valley Vista and Mary Collins. We provide both before and after-school care, as well as anytime the students are on break. So that's spring break, winter break, when we have teacher in-service days, as well as our summer camp, which you will hear me call Champ Camp. Our staff, we are at our two locations, are a community Our staff, we are at our two locations, are community members. Over half of our staff attended and graduated from Petaluma City Schools. Five are current parents in our schools, and all of them meet licensing requirements, with the majority of them holding a CDA, AA, bachelor's degree, and even a master's in teaching credentials. The staff are community members, and they go above and beyond every day to take care of the students, whether it be after-school or in our Champ Camp model when we are not in, when school is not in session. Excellent. And so here's really the, the meat of what we will be providing. So we will be rotating our curriculum when the students are not in their breakout sessions to really provide the fun and the academics together. And so it's, we really lean on the social-emotional support and having students be in charge of their own learning. So teachers, our teachers, are there to provide the, the framework and to provide support and really lead kids through and follow their lead. So our five themes are friendship, outdoors, innovation, movement, and creativity. And so each of the different activities that are planned for the students and presented to them fall within those categories. And we have a little system where they have almost like a passport where they can collect badges as they go, and so they can really decide what they are interested in participating in. So there are also four different areas that we lean into. So just imagine is problem-solving. Only U is discovering your unique abilities and capacities. Stewardship is becoming accomplices in our shared goals to care for and make the world a better place. And lastly, in it together, and that's learning about and connecting with each other. So we look at the academic piece as the, you know, what our enrichment teachers are gonna be providing, and then we are gonna be providing the components above and beyond that and the rest of that nine-hour day to support that academic progress. And then also the fun. Our kids are running around, they're jumping, they're climbing, they're being able to, you know, do all of those summer skills that we're looking at. So we are super excited to be able to share this presentation with you guys today. I will hand it back to JJ.
Next slide. Are there any questions? Hello.
How are you? It's very exciting, a lot of work.
Yeah. So I was just trying to wrap my brain around what this looks like for, first of all, you're, so Champions is gonna, this is at all of our elementary schools, right?
This is at McKinley, but it's a district-wide program. So students from across the district
Okay.
will be enrolled in the McKinley program, similar to, I believe, the summer school model.
Okay.
And busing, you know, buses will pick up kids from around the area.
We, we've had different models throughout, throughout the years, but this is typically, summer school is housed at one, one campus, and students are brought to that.
Okay, and it's nine hours, starting and until?
Eight to five.
Eight to five.
Parents don't have to keep their kids there from eight to five also.
So they can come and go?
They can pick their kids up early, you know, we'd like them in the mornings when those academic components are happening, but a student is not trapped.
So there, it isn't necessarily that they have to be there nine hours a day for five days a week.
Correct. We are required to offer a nine-hour program for those families and students that need and want it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So the nine-hour day, beginning and ending, is childcare for working parents? Is that what it?
Yeah, I mean, it's an expanded learning model, so we believe learning is happening. It's a little bit deeper than just childcare. But yeah, it's available for our working parents or kids who just want to be there for nine hours. Heaven forbid, they may just want to stay.
And can you tell us about the capacity?
We will, we have projected for 200 students, but we did write into the MOU that if there is a higher demand, that we'll work with Champions to get staffing and, and work with Chris around space to enroll more. There's also fee-based programs happening throughout the district that is a different model from this program. So this is our academic summer, right? We're building around our traditional summer school model. But there are also programs happening at Cherry Valley, Valley Vista, Grant, and also at Lucasey through our three different program providers that are fee-based.
And, you know, one of those goals that you listed was, you know, learning loss. And so I imagine there's, you know, gonna be some participants who need the, to have the child looked after for a day. But then I imagine there are other students where, you know, a teacher would say, you'd really benefit from this in terms of keeping up on grade standards. And how do we, how do we do the outreach and recruitment for students?
So our enrollment process has been incredibly targeted right now and has been in moving out in tiers. So we started the enrollment process in February through the identification. So right now, it's referral-based. So I've been working with principals, and they've been working with their school sites. And we have a common Google Sheet on targeted referrals, getting the kids who need it the most, and their siblings, by the way. So I've been doing these summer programs a long time, and a common problem is when the fifth grader gets referred, but the first grader doesn't. And we don't want that to be a barrier, right? For that, that fifth grader, he needs it, so that first grader will also be enrolled in the program. Yeah.
I'd like to hear more about the transportation, so that you're gonna be providing from McDowell and Valley Vista and Pen Grove. Like, what's the pickup, the bus schedule?
We're gonna have the pickups in the morning for that 8:00 AM drop-off. 8:00 AM to 8:30 is gonna, we're gonna be providing breakfast. So I think it's important for kids who want to eat and just, just be there for about 30 minutes before we hit the ground running. The busing home, I have to work the routes out with Marsha, but I think the busing home will have those kids home by five or at their drop-off by 5:00 PM.
So we're, we're doing pickup at Pen Grove, and we're doing pickup at McDowell. And we're doing this program at McKinley this year because we're painting McDowell in here tonight. And then we're also doing a pickup at Valley Vista.
Yeah.
So we're doing it kind of on three points across town. And then, again, we're working out some of the, we're fine-tuning some of the details about. Then drop-off would be theoretically at those three sites as well.
And then for our students at the year-rounds, you know, what are their opportunities?
The students at the year-rounds can come into this program as well. The dates of the program go right, bump right up until that first day. So they, and I talked with Carly and Liza, and I just said, don't let a kid who, you know, maybe they want a week before school starts back up, right? Don't let that impede their enrollment, right? The ratios will just be lower for that last week. So there's flexibility, right, around those year-rounds to participate in a majority of the program. And, you know, I, I think we'll take a look at what we do this summer and see, this is our first summer, trying it, right? So we tried one, because we also don't know what we don't know with everything changing from year to year. But I think it's a huge opportunity for us to tend to take a look at what worked, what didn't, and get the feedback from parents, students, teachers, bus drivers.
I would also say this summer is a little bit unique because there's a very short window because of how the calendars fall between the last day of school and the first day of our year-round schools. Typically, we have like six weeks, and this year it's like five. So it's a little bit of a truncated summer for our year-round this year. So hopefully in future years, it will, will be more, more like a long ones of six weeks. That the whole goal is to have this program be the district program that we're able to bring kids in from every school who can participate. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, JJ. It's, it's an expensive model that we're trying out this year, so we'll, we'll see that.
It, it, it does, absolutely. The thing is, because of the way the funding cycle worked, we got money last year in 2122, kind of toward the end. And so we did not have ELOP up and running. So this year, we benefit from the fact that we can actually leverage some that carry over to, to be more innovative and try these new things. And so then we'll have to cost it out and see how sustainable, what parts that are sustainable. So the money, we have two years to spend. So we have to spend down 2122 by this June, and then 2223 by next June. So, and we also have 120,000 art grant that JJ was also successful at getting, and so we're using those funds as well. So kind of, but it may not be a sustainable model that we can continue at this robust. But again, we're in learning loss, right? So we're, this seems like the year that we should do as much as we can for students. And then we'll see how much we can continue next year.
I just thought of something. In terms of how do you monitor or, you know, evaluate the effectiveness of the academic? I mean, is there some kind of process that you're gonna use to see whether these small groups interventions, you know, are working? Is it just gonna be based on how well they do the next year, or?
I think we're gonna be doing a little bit of both. I think we're gonna be taking a look at some of the assessments that kids utilize in the spring. I believe it's the star assessments here. The programs also come with a pre-and post, which is fine to show, but I mean, it's very rare that you're gonna show deep impactful staying academic growth in a four-week program. Normally, the recommendation data shows it should be four to six weeks, at least, in a summer program. But we're gonna be utilizing that data not only to place them, right? But to measure that, we'll measure the spring and the fall, but we also have some internal assessments that those programs come with. And we also have our math coach, Josh, utilizing, especially for this math component. I really wanted to capture some attitudinal data around math. And so I think that part of the math component is so important, is identifying as someone who can do math even when it's hard. Because I know I was always, I'm not a math person, and I was taught through being a teacher not to say that ever again, right? So we're gonna do some survey data on the kids that are age-appropriate, with little emojis for the little kids, just to measure what their attitude around math is after this experience. And then obviously, parent survey data, teacher survey data. But for the academics, there'll be some assessments.
Any other questions, comments? All right.
And then of course, and while we didn't, this was on the agenda, but Petaluma High is also, is gonna be the site for the secondary summer school. Yeah, ELOP is, is just TK six, through sixth grade. Yeah, well, ELOP is, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right, moving on to comments from the public on non-agendized items. We are going to open the chat, and if you have a comment on something that is not on the agenda, please put your first and last name in the chat while it is open and people are adding. I'm going to read the, the public comment policy. Under Government Code, Section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. Well, Government Code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees. The district does have a policy specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items, period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Okay, I don't see anyone online. We have some folks in person. Simone.
You guys for offering this opportunity for those to just come and speak their concerns or questions. My name is Simone Elenfeld. And I have a daughter who is in second grade at Pen Grove Elementary. Some of you have received an email of concern. I had a recent event with my daughter at Pen Grove where she was threatened by a fellow student. Her life was threatened and in a very explicit manner and fashion. And there has been ongoing issues with violence and, and the tolerance and threshold. And I wasn't aware, the magnitude or the scope, until this particular event was brought to my attention by my daughter. And knowing that there was previous history, and it was communicated and, and, and caused for concern for many years through the school. And the response was continually, you know, there's a process. And, and I can be empathetic and respectful of that. But my question is, is that what is the cap? If there is a process and, and it's ongoing, where's the threshold? If it already gets to that level and it's still in the process, what's next? And as a parent, that's terrifying. My daughter had the result, she's only seven, and she had the result to attend class the next day, wearing all of her jewelry on her neck to save herself. Because she's seven, and she didn't want to miss her class party. And I'm proud of her for being so brave. But at the same time, I'm sad that she feels that she has to take it upon herself to fix it. She's since been out of school because the issue as it stands is, it, it's not, it, it's, it's continual, but it's, it's also, at the same time, it's unknown from one day to the next, is today gonna be an okay day or not? It's, it's unpredictable, and that's what the scariest. If you have a student in class and they're kind of a constant pester, you can take that into account and consideration. But when you just don't know, the anxiety and anticipation of what that is gonna be for school, you know? And so my daughter had asked me, because her life was threatened and along with her best friend. And her best friend went back to school. And my daughter asked me, she said, Mom, is my best friend still alive? Because she's gone back to school. And I said, yes, sweetie. And she said, well, okay, then I can go back to school. And I can't believe that she's having to weigh this out. And my question is, is that what can we anticipate? And she's my first and only. And I know that there's red tape, and I know that there's loopholes, and I know that there's all these things. But she's in second grade. We have a long way to go. We're newer to Petaluma. And is this the foundation for the rest of all of our school years? Is this a protocol? Is this what I need to anticipate and prepare my daughter for? And I just, I can't. And, and what are we asking to subject our children to? That she has to continue to bear this behavior and numb herself to it? And I know that there's outside resources. And I'm wondering, on some of these students, why we're not utilizing more of those outside resources?
You have about 10 seconds left.
Okay. And, and I have personal experience with this child. And one time, he, he confided in me that garden and art is his favorite. And I asked him why, and he And I asked him why, and he said, because I can't do it wrong. And I'm wondering why we're asking him to conform to this box of public education when there's outside resources that can cater to his needs and he can blossom. And everyone can be where they need to be at the level that they need to be. I thank you for your listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Katie Gill.
Hi, my name is Katie Gill and I'm a teacher at PAX and I have two children at McKinley, TK in first grade. I've been very vocal about the staff changes and aftercare changes due to ELOP funding at McKinley. I've heard there has been a retraction of the released staff members and I would like to say thank you for hearing us and for understanding how important these people are to our school, our students and our families. I do want to encourage further transparency of the ELOP funding and the structure of aftercare. Parents deserve the right to know who will be watching their children. Program cost, I know there's a fee based, but what is that? To with enough notice to decide if it will work for their families or not. If any of you are in the childcare age of life, it is a long process. It is expensive, it's timely, and it's a lot of stress for parents. A lot of warning and notice is really important. Again, I do want to thank you for keeping our beloved staff members at McKinley. I look forward to hearing more, hopefully soon, what the aftercare program will look like in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin?
Hi there. I'm here to speak to the same topic as Ms. Gill. My name is Dr. Justin Lipp. I'm the vice president of the PTA at McKinley. Previously had sent you folks the resolution on behalf of the board, the school, the PTA board, expressing our dissatisfaction. I did want to thank everybody here as well for affirmative progress. Superintendent Harris, for your constructive email on to that subject. To echo some of Ms. Gill's notes, we were, I think, dissatisfied with the initial, what we felt was lack of consultation with, with that change. We do appreciate the, the further engagement, but you know, we'll be of course continuing to try to look for opportunities to partner and offer insight and input on, on this topic, given that it does have a large impact. I'll say that at the PTA meeting in mid-March, we went for almost three hours with the number of public comments that were there. It was significant, a lot of, a lot of support for, for those particular employees and for just making sure that, you know, that that TK and K age bracket, you know, having a first grader myself who's just been through that program. It was instrumental in making sure that we had a positive experience in coming to Petaluma as relatively new residents. So along those lines, thank you all for your time and I have copies of the resolution, but I don't know if you folks, you probably already have that. Happy to. Thank you.
Did anyone else put something in the chat? No? Okay. All right. Thank you all. Moving on to adoption and approval of the agenda.
I'm going to adopt and approve the agenda.
Second.
Oh, all in favor?
I.
All right. A report on activities and correspondence of school board members since the last board meeting, mental health town hall, NAACP Education Committee, Boy Scout Troop 74 meeting, Climate Action Committee meeting, LCAP Expeditionary Learning Visit with Valley Vista Staff, PCRC Carpe Diem Portfolio Night, CASA College and Career Night, CASA Musical Rock of Ages Equity Committee meeting, McNair Straw Project at Lazy R Ranch, which you heard about earlier, and site visits to the Petaluma High Auto Shop and CASA Culinary Program. Also our student board members, Pre-Medicine Club, Childhood Cancer Relief Club, UC Berkeley Science Bowl Invitational, Science Olympiad at Corona Creek, tours at the Petaluma Wildlife Museum, Petaluma Wildlife Museum fundraiser, Sacramento Reptile Expo with Petaluma Wildlife Museum, Petaluma High Recycling Club meeting, Petaluma High Gender Sexuality Alliance Club meeting. So does anyone have any comments about any of their activities? The what? I'm sorry. Oh, the climate.
Climate action. It's a very proactive group that's run very well. And it was just, I thought we did a really, really started moving on some interesting ideas to really get it embedded in the, in our schools. It was great. Thank you, Tony.
Julian or Alan, did you want to share anything? You don't have to, just ask it. Okay. All right. Um, all right. Comments from the public on consent items. We will reopen the chat for about a minute. Or if anyone in public has a comment on something on the consent agenda, you can come forward. If you're online, please put your first and last name in the chat and what you would like to comment about. I think we can close the chat now on that. All right. Approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I moved, oh my God, that's so loud. I moved to poll 12.1.1, the minutes that they need to be fixed.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
I. Yeah, it's just missing me pulling something and us ever voting on the thing I polled. So I just, yeah. I can work with Kylie offline. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Caitlin.
Yeah.
All right.
So I moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All right. Any questions or comments on anything?
Only because it was interesting to find out about the Pen Grove Elementary School ramp and why we have to do it. I just think it's fascinating. So I guess I'm asking for an explanation.
So as you know, we are replacing a four classroom building with a six classroom building and constructing a new library at Pen Grove. And we had hoped to move that process along a little faster. So it's, the, the project itself, it's what's called a deferred some levels. So we went out to bid in the fall for a company, JLC, Jeff Lukehead construction, to construct the majority of the building components in a factory and then truck them onto site. And so we had that project bid opening, it was successful. They then go through the design process and go to DSA for approval. And so through that process, DSA determined that they wanted to see an ADA accessible ramp, Americans with Disabilities Act Not ADA Attendance, an ADA accessible ramp from Old Adobe Road, which has no sidewalks and is a dangerous, quite a dangerous road up to the upper parking area. And so we did. And, and the way that DSA works is they expect.
One of the last places you'd want to ramp down to.
Well, not, not only do we not encourage our students to walk along Old Adobe Road, but we're certainly not going to encourage folks in wheelchairs to do that, especially since there's train tracks nearby. That there's actually a big traffic study happening right now with Sonoma County. In fact, there's a May 4th meeting that I'm going to go to. So there's a whole big traffic study in general. We, we actually tried to argue that as well as the fact that we don't really want to be encouraging folks to walk along Old Adobe Road. That fell on deaf ears. We actually did contact our local assemblyman, Damon Connolly, and asked their office to try to intervene. And that also went, that was unsuccessful. And so at the end of the day, we needed to work at getting this project to move forward because DSA basically came out and said, we can't do anything. Couldn't demolish the building, couldn't do anything until we had approval and that approval was hinged on this ramp. So we have moved forward with a tentative design of the ramp. We're going to do it in two increments where we do the building pad, the demolition, the building pad, the site work related to that. And then summer of '24, we will pick up the ramp and then some other related site work at that time. I wanted to buy us time to talk about the ramp because the preliminary design actually has the ramp. So that, that if you, if you think about Pen Grove, it comes down, you know, it kind of comes down and then it ends up very wide. It kind of goes from roughly 20 feet to about 40 feet. And the initial survey showed that we, the sidewalk, because you put in a section of sidewalk, because you need something to connect to the ramp. And that would jet out into that driveway about 12 feet. It would still leave 20. But in speaking with the architect, I walked that area with him and ironically, there's a whole grove of redwood trees right there. Nine of them are dead or dying. Drought, I'm sure. So PGD has come in and they're actually going to remove nine of those redwoods. So to me, that's an opportunity to try to think about a meandering ramp through the redwoods and kind of, and not jet out into the parking, into the drive. So anyway, that design is going to move forward, this preliminary design that's approved. And we actually just got approval yesterday on the ramp. And we're still on fire life safety and some other stuff, so we're hoping that project is going to move forward very quickly. The cost of the ramp is estimated right now at around 6,000 to 700,000. We're doing what we can to try to mitigate that. They do not, DSA does not consider that to be a hardship. We tried to argue that because they believe that there's a, there's a 20% set threshold. That should be a cap. They're not supposed to have districts spend more than 20% on ADA accessibility improvements on a project. But they're using this more as a threshold, we have to meet the 20%. I've always understood it to be a cap that they can't require. So. That, does that answer your question?
Yes.
I'm trying to not have the pain that we felt.
Yeah.
It's been a three month, it's been a three month adventure.
Very politically correct. Thank you, Chris.
I'll say it. I love the ADA. It's great, but that's giving big like bridge to nowhere energy.
Well, and we don't know what traffic improvements might impact what we're doing. There's that.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on anything? All right. All in favor? All right. Any, I guess we're going to comment from the public on action items. If anyone in person or online has a comment on any of the action items, if you're online, please put your first and last name in the chat. If you are in person, please come forward to the podium. We'll keep the chat open for about a minute. All right. We can close the chat. Right. Caitlin's favorite action item, AB 361.
I moved to stay in hybrid for another 30 days.
All in favor? All right. Board meeting dates.
They look good. A second.
All in favor?
I.
All right. Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Petaluma City Elementary School District. Jason, did you want to talk about this?
Sure. So every year, as you probably remember, every year we bring forward our declaration of need anticipating what we think we will be hiring for and our commitment to try and recruit and hire fully qualified teachers, which we're in full swing on already. But so that's, this first one is for our elementary school district.
Thank you.
I've moved to approve the declaration.
All in favor?
I.
All right. And looks like the same for the high school district.
It is the same for the high school district.
I moved to approve this declaration too.
All right. All in favor?
I.
All right. Resolution 2223-22 honoring the week of the teacher.
So would you like, did you want me to read this one in? A resolution of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts honoring the contribution of teachers to quality education and declaring the week of May 1st through the 5th 2023 as the week of the teacher. Whereas California Education Code Section 37222 sets aside the second Wednesday of May in May as the day of the teacher and encourages suitable commemorative exercises directing attention to teachers and the teaching profession. Whereas the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts has the utmost respect and admiration for Petaluma's professional teachers who have dedicated their lives and their talents to the education of our students, who are truly our most precious and important resource. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes the truly vital role, role of teachers in realizing the vision of the California State Board of Education for California public education. All California students of the 21st century will attain the highest level of academic knowledge, applied learning and performance skills to ensure fulfilling for personal, personal lives and careers and contribute to civic and economic progress in our diverse and changing democratic society. Now therefore be it resolved that the, that the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary School District and the Petaluma Joint Union High School District hereby proclaims the week of May 1st through the 5th 2023, the week of the teacher, extending its sincere appreciation to the teachers in the districts who make our public schools successful.
I moved to approve the resolution.
I second.
All in favor?
I.
All right. Resolution 2223-23 recognizing May 21st through 27th, Classified School Employees Week.
So I read that one in. A resolution of the Board of Education of the Petaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts honoring the contribution of the classified school employees to quality education and declaring the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023 as the CASA, as Classified School Employees Week. Whereas classified school employees provide valuable services to the schools and students of the Petaluma School Districts. And whereas classified school employees contribute to the establishment and promotion of positive instructional environment. And whereas classified school employees employed by the Petaluma School Districts strive for excellence in all areas relative to the educational community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Petaluma School Districts hereby recognize and wish to honor the contribution of the classified school employees to quality education in the state of California and in the Petaluma School Districts and declare the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023 as Classified School Employees Week in the Petaluma School Districts.
If I could just add, I think, you know, now more than ever, our, our teachers and our staff are. so incredibly important for the success of our students, particularly coming out of the pandemic. Having, you know, I know people probably, you know, I'll say this, but we have some incredible, we have incredible teachers, incredible staff that make our district function. So I just want to extend a heartfelt thank you to everything, everything that our teachers and staff do to make PCS such a great place to 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 go to school and to work.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did we already?
I move to approve Resolution 2223-23.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, I'm going to ask Ellen to read Resolution 2223-24, declaring May as Jewish American Heritage Month.
And I'll try to get through it without crying. Whereas for thousands of years, members of Jewish communities have sustained their strong identity and rich traditions while persevering through persecution, enslavement, forced segregation, and the horrors of the Holocaust. And whereas since 1654, Jews have been contributing to the culture and history of the United States of America while achieving great success, strengthening the country and helping shape America through a deep commitment to faith, family and community. And whereas in his second year in office, I did not know this, President George Washington wrote a letter to the Toro Synagogue in Newport, Rhode Island, one of the first Jewish houses of worship in the United States of America, reaffirming the nation's commitment to religious freedom and noting that the government of the United States would give to bigotry no sanction and to persecution no assistance, as he also emphasized that all Americans are entitled to liberty of conscience and immunities of citizenship. And whereas it was that belief that drew generations of Jewish immigrants to the United States of America to rebuild their lives, whether that included Jewish families fleeing pogroms or persecution in Europe during the last century, Holocaust survivors, or Jews trapped behind the Iron Curtain. And whereas this history has led many Jewish Americans to find common cause with the civil rights movement, and Jewish Americans have continued their strong support for liberty and human dignity, thus uniting to end discrimination in voting, unemployment and public accommodation, while also supporting equity for women, farm workers, the disabled and LGBTQIA+ Americans. And whereas Jewish Americans, including those in Petaluma, contribute to continue, continued, I'm sorry, continue to contribute to the nation's progress as scientists, teachers, entrepreneurs, members of the armed forces, public servants, private citizens, leaders, parents and citizens in all walks of life. And whereas the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts have acknowledged and recognized the urgent need to educate students in the community on Jewish history and culture. And whereas anyone interested in learning more about the heritage and contribution of Jewish Americans, as well as other resources, should visit www.jewishheritagemonth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Jewish American Heritage Month is when the rich history of Jewish Americans is celebrated. Their contributions to this nation are honored and thus the Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School District Board of Education hereby recognizes May as Jewish American Heritage Month and encourages all Petaluma families, students and staff to acknowledge and honor Jewish Americans for their notable accomplishments and outstanding service to the community of Petaluma, the state of California and the nation writ large.
Thank you, Ellen. I just really appreciate this, especially like the rise in antisemitism that we're continuing to see and the book bans on really important books like Night. I'm just really grateful that we are celebrating Jewish American Heritage Month. So personally, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, I do too. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I move to approve. Resolution 223-24.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right. Petaluma Junior High Bell Schedule Revision.
So as you may remember, back in March 24th, Petaluma Junior High School had a power outage, which forced the school to go into a modified schedule and and release students a little bit earlier than normal. So we wanted to update the bell schedule for Petaluma Junior High School to reflect March 24th and to make sure that the board is aware that that changed for that day. It doesn't impact Petaluma Junior High School's instructional minutes or required days. So but we just wanted to make sure that the board is aware and can approve the modified schedule for that day.
It lowers their overall minutes for the year, but they had enough of a buffer to, we don't have to make, we have to make up the day and it was it was a minimum day. So enough minutes in that day to count for a full a full day of instruction.
I move to approve the amended calendar.
I second.
Bell Schedule Calendar. Yeah.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Grades K through five, history slash social study adoption.
Yeah, so history, it's been quite a while since history has actually had gone through any kind of updates. And so this is a great opportunity to update our history, our committees, both elementary and secondary. I had the chance to review and select and pilot new history materials over the last couple of years. And 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 they have selected some new materials that we bring up for the board for for approval.
Okay, great, thank you. So do you want to have any questions about this, comments?
Yeah, a question, Tony. So I've noticed on the K5 and the South County, the committees identified kind of the criterion that they were using to judge books. And I really liked those criteria, understanding history from multiple perspectives while developing a sense of community. I think that's the challenging, that is the challenging thing with history, I think. And but I didn't see that for the for the secondary, for the grade 612. Do you talk about the criterion that we choose for that and how these? Yeah.
Sure, actually, I have Lindsay Menor, Academic Coordinator, who spearheaded the process for history. And I believe she is. Online. And she might be able to share the process for secondary.
Great, thanks.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you all. Actually, the the criteria that was developed to look at all of the materials was the same criteria K12. So if it wasn't listed on the on the secondary, that just must have been left often error. But yeah, we developed that as a K12 committee last school year.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions while we have Lindsay?
Hi.
All right. Thank you.
Can I just add something? I just wanted to add, I wanted to add a thank you for all of the teachers who participated in the pilot, doing a pilot and trying out two brand new curriculums with students and getting the training and all of that was, it was a lot of extra work and they were thoughtful, they were dedicated. They had such great conversations about the the content. So I just wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged tonight, too.
Yeah, thank you.
So this is an action item, right?
Yes, thanks, Lindsay.
I move to approve the adoption of history, social science, as recommended in Items 2, 3 and 4 under Educational Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Oh, Matty's so impressed if you show. All right. Next up, the MOU for Champions for the 2023 Summer School Program.
I move to approve the MOU with Champions.
I second.
All right, any questions, comments before we do so? I just appreciate, I appreciate the presentation, your explanation. There's been a lot of questions and I just feel like you guys addressed all of those. I just appreciate all the time and effort, especially the transportation. That's, I'm really happy that we're providing that for the students. So, yeah. Any other questions or comments about this? Super excited as well. All right. So I want to make a, did we, oh.
Who made the motion?
Wait, did we do it?
We can do it again.
I feel like.
Yeah, Ellen moved it, I second. Now we've done, yeah, now it's official.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Yeah, now you can breathe, Jason. Just kidding. All right.
Anything about the fall?
What's up next? Okay, Williams Settlement Quarterly Report, Jason.
Nothing. I'm pleased to report that there were no complaints of any kind.
Great. All right. Student Services, First Reading of Board Policy 5144, MyTea.
All right, thank you so much. So I'm doing quite a bit of work looking at board policy around student discipline, welcoming schools. We have more coming your way in the near future, but this one was Board Policy 5144, where it had due process and discipline and ARs and board policy kind of all wrapped into one. So this is taking that apart. It also includes the behavior discipline matrix as a part of the board policy so that you can take a look at that as well. So we have 5144, which is discipline, 5144.1, which is due process, and then 5137, which is welcoming schools, which is a brand new board policy for us. And I'll take any questions that you might have. And we'll be bringing the ARs forward in the May, at the May meeting as well for your review.
All of which follow the model CSBA.
Yes.
Language very closely.
Yes. It was really an attempt to try to separate some things and make them clearer and more welcoming in many ways.
My only, I only have a comment and and it's just that I really appreciate that it was broken up into three things. They're very, it's very clear, it's clearly written, it's obviously written in a way that anybody could read it. It's comprehensive as far as I can see. But I just, you know, because oftentimes, you know, the discipline just got folded into, well, it just becomes suspension or it just becomes punitive. And. And then the welcoming is just really cool. So I just appreciate all your work. It looked like a tremendous amount of work. So, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. I just, I want to, may I respond to the, your comment about the suspension? There's, we really look at it as a spec, as an, as a spectrum. There's, suspension is always up for consideration for offenses that are, right? But we also want to look at other means of correction. What is going to be the most impactful thing for that student and that learning experience? So we really want to look at all those options and often we use many different things to support students and their behavior. It's not just a one size fits all because that's just doesn't work for humans. So, yeah. Thank you.
And this is just the first reading?
Yes.
Correct, I'll be bringing, if there are any changes, I'll be bringing that back to you for a second read in May?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just discussion information, so there's no action needed.
I just wonder, based off of one of the public comments we heard tonight, I guess like, how does this go from us to the school site to get translated to parents and classroom teachers and all of that?
Yeah, great question. So I think that comes out in many, in a couple of different ways. A lot of this has to do with our positive behavior intervention supports. So that's how it gets translated for staff and their training. And it also is our restorative practices. And that also is translated to our staff through professional development. Where we need to get better and where our communication needs to improve is with parents and their understanding of the work that we're doing. I think that's the next layer of this work. So. Point taken that, yes, we need more opportunities for parents to have an understanding of how those two things work together and how our discipline matrix and other means of correction and what the suspendable offenses are and are not.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? On any of these? Julian or Ellen, any questions or comments? All right, future business, do we have anything for future business?
I'd just like to put a plug in. We, I know we have our next formal board meeting is not till May 9th, but we do have a special board meeting next week, next Tuesday, at 5 o'clock, will be the topic, to sum it up in one word, is equity. We'll be talking about professional development. So some of the work that MyTea was just discussing with PBIS, but more, especially with the restorative practices we'll be hearing from First Water, the First Water Group that's been working with our teachers and staff. We're going to also talk equity from the lens of financials. So we'll be talking about costs for parents and from a typical family, PTA, what does that look like? Raising funds, how do we, how do we as a district make sure that all students are getting, I wouldn't say equal, but all students are getting what they need? And then we're also going to be looking at parcel tax update and bond update to see where we're at with our bond funds, we've spent so far, and then sort of where we're headed with parcel tax and bond. So that's kind of the the concept for for next Tuesday at 5, we'll start at 5 o'clock. Something about that for for future business. Here. Yeah.
Alan or Julian, do you guys have anything that you want to see on a future agenda or any pressing issues you feel like need to be discussed? Anyone else? No? Okay, all right. And we are going to report out of actions taken in closed session. We are going to report out about case, about four cases. Number 202, 30217C66, case number 20230217B72, case number 20230317B01, and case number 20230302V77. These cases have been presented to the board that the students did commit an expellable act as defined by the California Education Code. Prior disciplinary, prior disciplinary actions have been attempted and were not successful and/or due to the nature of the act, the presence of the pupil causes a continuing danger to the physical safety of the pupil and others. The recommended motion is for the board to support the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion in accordance to board policy and to facilitate enrollment in a county-operated core and community school. The student expulsion status will be in effect for the spring semester of 22 to 23 school year for cases 20230217C66 and for case number 20230317B01. And for the fall semester of the 2324 school year for cases 20230217B72 and for 20230302V77. And with that, can you pass this to Kylie? And with that, we are adjourned.